Our North Carolina Medicaid and potential expansion. And Stony Belvins will be sharing this information with us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I guess we have a slide deck. Here we go. All right, so this is a big day, I think, in the life of HHS and for our community because it looks like we're finally going to get to expand Medicaid. Do want to just give a little bit of background for those who maybe have not been following this as close in the community. But just so folks know, Medicaid is a federally funded program. It is state administered and then it's delivered in counties. It's a very county-specific program. So you apply in the county in which you live. You receive your benefits in the county that you live. We determine your eligibility, make sure you keep your benefits. And in North Carolina, it has always primarily been for lower wealth children and adults, elderly adults and adults with disability. Each state has a unique Medicaid plan, so Medicaid would not look the same in every state. If you were receiving Medicaid in New York or Florida, moved to North Carolina, there will be certain pieces that would be exactly the same, but it wouldn't, all the benefits may not match and you would certainly need to reapply in North Carolina. So while it's a federal program, very state-specific. The Affordable Care Act actually called to expand Medicaid nationwide. It was a big feature of the Affordable Care Act. And in 2012, the Supreme Court ruled that states could not be forced to expand their Medicaid programs as a part of ACA. So it became, you know, a state-by-state decision about whether they would expand Medicaid or not. You know, in 2014, it was available in 26 states and DC. So a lot of states jumped in right off the bat. Other states were very reluctant to move. And North Carolina was a little slower to move and to warm up to the idea of Medicaid expansion. But now, you know, in March of this year, we became the 40th state to pass into law Medicaid expansion. So I really just want to stop there a minute because there's so many questions about it. But I really think we just need to stop a second and celebrate this. So for many of us, we've advocated for many years for Medicaid expansion. Because the beauty of that is it really offers health insurance to a whole lot of folks in our community who have not had health insurance in a long, long time, which opens up access to healthcare. So I just want to stop a minute and celebrate whatever you want to celebrate. Woo, that's how I like to celebrate. Let's put that on there for record. People probably watching this presentation for years to come. And where are we now? So what's our current timeline? So House Bill 76 passed the Senate and the House pretty overwhelmingly, you know, nonpartisan lines, and then was signed into law by the governor on March 27th. So it is law. It is in effect law in North Carolina, Medicaid expansion. But two more things have to happen before residents can actually enroll in the program. One is we have to pass a state budget. So a clause was put in this law that says until the state budget passes, Medicaid expansion cannot be enacted. So we're all going to have to wait for the state budget to pass. Hopefully that'll be sooner than later so that we can get started. We also have to get North Carolina's plan approved by the Federal Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. So they have to approve North Carolina's expansion plan. And I'll be honest with you, one of the issues that may have to be resolved is North Carolina wants a work requirement in their plan. I think it'll depend on how the federal CMS interprets that. If it's a work referral, I think it possibly could go as it's written, sort of like a voluntary work program. But if it's seen as a mandated work program, it will not, I'd be so bold to say it will not pass CMS because other states have attempted this and the federal government's been very clear that you cannot force a person to work to receive this benefit, to receive health coverage. So when I talk to folks at the Division of Health Benefits, they're really predicting a go-live date anywhere between July 1, if we were to get a budget to pass pretty quickly. We believe CMS will work really quickly. Then we could begin to take applications as soon as July 1. If the budget, you know, drags on a bit and it moves a little bit slower, it could be as late as December 1. To be quite honest with you, if a budget doesn't pass, it could be the whole next biennium. We saw that happen last time. But I do want to say that that December 1 date is worth paying attention to because unless I'm mistaken, if we're not in place by December 1, we will not get the $1.8 billion from the federal government, the bonus for expanding Medicaid. I cannot imagine that our lawmakers would miss out on that money. But it's beyond my influence to say. So what's it going to mean locally? I think the good news is, we start here, we're talking about 15,000, over 15,000 current members of our community who will have access to healthcare. And so these, it's primarily for people 19 to 64, who are living below 133% of the federal poverty level. So I might have to lean on Philip. For a single person, it's a little over 20,000, maybe 22,000, I think, 133. For a family of four, it's about 40,000 if I'm right. Yeah, about 44,000. So you can kind of see what that income level would be and who will be impacted. We do need to recognize that it doesn't mean that every person in Buncombe County will have health insurance. I think there's still a couple of populations that could still sort of fall through the cracks a little bit. So if you're over 65, you'll have, you can get Medicare. You know, if you're at this poverty level and now from birth to 65, you'll be able to get Medicaid. We also have the ACA. So folks that are working, they're above that, they can afford to get in the marketplace, you can have that. And then, of course, there's the folks in our community that have private insurance, whether they're self-insured or their employer. But our, our, members of our community who are undocumented aliens will still not have access to health coverage. So we'll still have, have some gaps there. And then there's always those people that are just above that poverty rate. So maybe they're at 135% of poverty and they have access to the ACA, but they still might not be able to afford to purchase health insurance. Or they're at a stage in life where it's buy health insurance or pay rent. They're 28 years old, you know, you're probably going to pay your rent. So we'll still have a few people that may benefit from the safety net approach. In terms of what it means for us operationally, we certainly serve almost 61,000 members of our community with Medicaid. This additional 15, five will represent about a 29% increase in our, in our caseload, in the folks that we will serve. So we've done the math, we've looked at what we would have to do to support that additional population and we believe that it will take us about 38 additional positions in operating costs, which would amount to about $3.4 million. The good news for that is in this bill is included provisions for counties to be able to expand their reach with no county dollars. So they're going to take some of these Medicaid, additional Medicaid funds, pass those along to counties so that counties won't have to bear the expense. As you rightly know, Medicaid already pays 75% of the cost of administration, the federal government does. So this just keeps the county from picking up that 25%. And there's provisions in the bill for that to continue for several fiscal years. After that, I've read the bill, it's a little bit unclear to me what the funding strategy is after state fiscal year 25. There will continue to be funding, but I think it's something worth this commission and the County Commissioners Association keeping an eye on to make sure that those costs don't revert back to counties in a few years because there should be ample funding to fund counties to do this work. So I lay that out there for something for you guys to think of in the future. And our advanced planning, these are our assumptions. We do believe that this will create simplified eligibility rules. So in some ways, it'll make it a little bit easier to determine whether people can receive Medicaid or not because there'll basically be one Medicaid program instead of what we have today, which is many programs based off your age, your stage, your disability and things like that. It will require us, however, to retrain our entire staff. So not everybody's working in that model. So we'll have to basically start from scratch, train all the, all of our current staff, train these 38 additional staffs. So we have a little bit of a ramp-up process here. And we will need to provide some pretty extensive quality control for just a little while because what a lot of folks probably don't realize is, you know, if you make a mistake, if the county staff make a mistake and do not determine eligibility correctly and then that person goes to the doctor and racks up pretty serious medical bills and then in audit, you're found to, that error is found, the county's responsible for the payback of those medical bills. So it's very important that we have a very strong QA model. We do have a strong QA model in Buncombe, but we're going to continue that into expansion. Other things that we're looking at doing, I think the big challenge in this market will be to find 38 staff fast enough to get them trained and ready to receive these people. But we've been working with HR, they've been really good about helping us come up with some ideas and we're reviewing our job descriptions, the qualifications, our work, our working titles. We're looking at like doing sort of like a rebranding of these positions so they really demonstrate what we do. We're asking to be able to start recruiting our staff as soon as the go-live date is set. So we don't want to wait till the day it starts to recruit. We want to be ahead of it so that we can be ready for people. We're going to advertise differently, expand that and actually go to a continuous recruitment process. So we'll basically just have open recruitment where people can apply for these jobs. We will interview them. And so when we're ready to hire, we can just offer the jobs to the people that have already been interviewed and we just begin to hire them immediately. So those are sort of our strategies to manage this and I'm here for any discussion that you might have.
Thank you, Stony, for sharing this important information for our community. And do any of the Commissioners have questions for Stony?
I do, just to wrap my mind around what this will actually look like when it rolls out. Are we working with community partners to fill any gaps? I know it's hard to find employees right now, it's very difficult to get 38 people overnight, even if you're paying significantly higher wages than is probably possible in any part of the state at this point. But are there any programs that we can jointly operate with to fill that need? Because you're going to get hit with at least 15,000, it seems like, if most people end up applying, that's a pretty significant number. Is there any contingency for lag time between hiring employees and getting them trained up to where you want them to be?
Yeah, so if I hear that question correctly, I think what we'll do is some of those positions will be like supervisory, our training staff, our quality staff, we'll probably try to hire them first. We think a lot of those will be internal promotions. Then we'll start hiring the masses of the workers that we need so we can run them through this training altogether. We have had community partners rise up and ask us, hey, is there any way we can help you in the way of like getting people enrolled into the Medicaid program? So a lot of our community-based organizations are already working. So these aren't, one way I think about is these aren't people that are moving into Buncombe County. These are people that are already here and already receiving services, but receiving them largely through nonprofit efforts or unfunded public efforts. So the real game changer is just, it really creates a funding stream which allows us to offer more service, right? We can access more service. I think the bigger challenge, while it'll be a big challenge to hire and train 38 people before this goes live, especially if it's July 1, but I think the long-term challenge for us really is the provider network. You know, do we have a provider network that's ready to take on an additional 15,000 people with health needs? And some of them with untreated health needs for quite some time. And I guess another encouraging thing to me really is the fact that Dogwood Health Trust is one of the healthy opportunity pilots. So we're already kind of ahead of the curve in terms of doing some of the social determinants work, which I think will really propel us a little bit faster into Medicaid expansion than maybe some parts of the state that haven't been doing that type of work.
Thank you.
Just one question and thanks, Stony. I certainly was worried I'd never see this day come to North Carolina, so I'm very excited to, to see it. It's going to help a lot of people and save, save lives across the state, especially over time. Can you give us an example of, you mentioned there's still be a gap of some kind. Can you kind of give me an example of what economic situation that might be?
Most glaring gap to me, and we already see this at times, would be someone who is not a citizen. So they reside in Buncombe County. They may have, you know, behavioral health or physical health needs, but there is no payer source for them. We see it sometimes, we're going to talk about child welfare tonight. We see it sometimes in our child welfare population where maybe I have a child in foster care who is undocumented but has severe and persistent behavioral health needs, where we have to pay 100% of the cost of those behavioral health needs, which can get pretty expensive pretty fast. So I think that that will be one population that we'll still, we will still need a safety net for. And the only encouraging thing, I guess, about that in western North Carolina is really, you know, our FQHC model in western North Carolina really in some ways started as migrant health. And so we have deep roots there and we have a really strong provider network. We really have three FQHCs in Buncombe County now and an FQHC look-alike in Mayhak. So our safety net system is strong. But I just don't want to send the message that everyone will have, there will still be small pockets of our community that will need safety net services to be healthy and well.
Stony, let me ask, excuse me, when we talk about the gap, but aren't we taking care of those people now?
Yeah, the provider community does. So a lot of that service is provided through our federally qualified health centers who receive different federal funding to provide healthcare services. The county very graciously also participates in what I call the assurance model to make sure people do have access to primary care services. So that would be our major provider. ABCCM also has a long history of providing some services to the uninsured and they still provide some services there. The free clinic model is all but gone in western North Carolina. However, like ABCCM still has medical services available to folks, we're on pharmacy and things like that. So like I say, we are really in a better position than other places in western North Carolina because of our history of serving the underserved. And how I would look at this is now there will be a payer source for the majority of folks that are already being served, which will free up those nonprofit dollars to really focus on the small population that remains.
Thank you so much, Stony. We appreciate that important update and we look forward to hearing more about this as it progresses. And now Rebecca Smith will join us to talk about the North Carolina Child and Family Specialty Plan. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, so I think I have a slide deck as well. Thank you. So I'm here today to talk a little bit about the North Carolina Child and Family Specialty Plan. And so this is a small cohort of folks that would be eligible for this specific plan. And it would be a single statewide plan designed to serve child welfare-involved children and families. And the purpose of this presentation is really to just share some information about what this plan would look like, what is happening right now at the North Carolina legislative level and just talk a little bit about what we're facing here locally as it pertains to the mental health system and its impact on our child welfare system. So the North Carolina Child and Family Specialty Plan would be a statewide plan where regardless of a member's geographic location, the plan would provide members with access to a broad range of physical health, behavioral health, pharmacy, long-term services and supports, intellectual developmental disability services and resources to address unmet health-related needs. The statewide plan would enable the members to have access to treatment plans and a robust care management system. So that's just a quick kind of overview. We're going to talk about the purpose and overview of the plan, talk about the proposed single statewide provision and why a change is really needed around this particular population that's being served, what the VIA Health improvements and requests look like, and then open it up for discussion. So there is current pending state legislation. It's Senate Bill 156 and House Bill 340. And the bill would really mandate, the purpose of the bill would really be to mandate the Department of Health and Human Services to issue an RFP for a statewide provider. So that would be really the purpose of this legislation if it does pass through, which it looks likely that that's going to happen. The plan provider would be required to develop and maintain a closed network of providers for four specific services, which include intensive in-home services, multi-systemic therapy, residential treatment services and services provided through psychiatric residential treatment facilities. The special population that would be eligible for these services would be children and youth in foster care. Currently in Buncombe County, we have about 320 youth and about 50 or so young adults that would qualify. Children receiving adoption assistance, that's a much larger group of children here in Buncombe County. Former foster care youth under the age of 26. So even those youth that do not opt into the extended foster care program through the age of 26, they would still be eligible. Minor children of individuals eligible for CFSP enrollment. So siblings of those children, the parents, guardians and custodians of those children. That's a huge part of this is allowing those adults to remain involved and to be a part of this specialized care. And then another huge one for me is families receiving child protective services in home services. So what that means is children who have not entered foster care but are at high risk of entering foster care, those children and their parents would be eligible for this resource and that's not currently an option. So we'd be able to do more preventative work than we're currently doing. So just an overview of the benefits of the plan. It would be, like I just said, prevention-focused. Adults being able to receive treatment as well as children is something that we really struggle with now is, is really making sure that we can access high-quality services for the parents involved. If we can and we're able to support parents in a different way, we might be able to prevent children from entering foster care, which would be really helpful. Children and DSS directors, so on behalf of foster children would be able to opt out of the plan if they prefer the tailored plan or standard plan, so just that flexibility. Care managers will be available 24/7 to assist with child emergencies. Care managers will assist with the transition out of foster care, so working over to another plan if a family's no longer eligible. And then medication management being a core service. So why is this needed and necessary? This, overall, this plan is critically needed to support the population that we serve in child welfare. Systemic changes are needed to address current challenges and I'll go into those in just a second. The provision for a single statewide provider is concerning. We are worried that a statewide plan may not be able to work with us at the same degree that our current partnership with our local management entity works. And we may lose some of the more individualized attention that we currently have. A loss of local collaboration and real-time response may happen. And regional providers, having a regional provider would allow for that, that real partnership to happen if that was, if that was ever to come to fruition and we were able to have a regional model, a regional option. So again, this really is a call for action in terms of something needs to be done. Something needs to happen differently to better support the children and their families that are involved in our child welfare system. Currently, we are facing a crisis with many of these children. We have a lack of adequate access to therapeutic-level placements willing to accept older children, siblings and children with complex trauma needs. We have long wait lists for outpatient services and enhanced services through our local providers. There is a lack of support or response from the state related to these needs and we have a lot of worries about the state's ability to lift up this, this, this is a huge lift. We have a worry that the state may struggle to get it up and running and what's going to happen in the meantime to these children. We also worry that clinical homes for these children are not currently being held accountable and we don't feel like this plan really addresses that issue. So our, the clinical homes are faced with many of the same concerns that all of us have been faced with around workforce challenges. And many of our providers have had to, to decrease the amount of services they're able to provide or completely shut down because of lack of staff and resources. And so having this plan implemented, there really needs to be a focus on lifting up these providers and making sure the resources are in place to meet the need. Some of the impacts of the worries and concerns with our system are that parents and caretakers are frustrated with the mental health system. We're seeing parents throw up their hands, drop their kids at hospitals and walk away. This is happening not just once every few months, it's happening daily. We get a call, this child isn't being picked up, we need DSS to respond. Those children are either ending up in, in foster care because we are not able to, to partner with their parents or we are stepping in and kind of being an intermediary with the mental health system. And so we really need a solution, not just for DSS, but for, for these parents who are trying to work through the system as well. Our children, our Buncombe County children are being placed all over the county, all over the state and sometimes out of state. And when that happens, because the resources aren't here available locally, we are, it's really hard to manage their care, right? It's hard to check in on them. It's hard to just stop by and see how they're doing if they're four or five hours away. And unfortunately, we really feel like the trauma and harm caused to these children and families is being exacerbated by this problem. We're here to help and be a safety net and sometimes because of the lack of resources, we're not achieving our goals. So some of the things that are currently going well with our VIA partnership, we wanted to share this because whatever direction we end up going, whether it's a single statewide plan, a regional plans, we want to make sure and not lose the things that are going well now and, and then we want to build on those things. And so we just wanted to share that we do have access to timely and trauma-informed clinical assessments for our youth and for our parents through partnerships with VIA and local providers. We have embedded care coordinators. So this statewide plan talks about having care managers available 24/7. We actually have care coordinators that sit in our office from VIA that work alongside us when we have an urgent need. That probably won't happen with a statewide plan. We have monthly and lately it's been more like daily meetings with our local management entity, VIA, to problem-solve and to look at the children and their needs and begin to, and work together to address those needs. And we wonder, you know, what that will look like with a statewide system. We have achieved building of resources, including opening up some 30-day assessment centers across the state and emergency placements across the state that not, don't always, are not able, always able to meet our needs, but it is effort that's being made. There is a commitment to continuous dialogue and co-creation of enhanced services. And then we've been really successful lately with some joint meetings with Mission Emergency Department and Copestone in, in working out plans to best serve our children, which has been great. So our local management entity, VIA Health, has been working across the counties that they serve to ensure that there's co-location in the DSS offices. They have worked to implement statewide and standardized policies, enhance their network adequacy and then coordinated response protocol with the DSSs. And we're in the middle of finalizing ours at this time. Their ask, VIA's ask, has been letters of support from both county management and county commissioners. And so, you know, with this information that's been provided, that's something that you all can consider in terms of your... you all can consider in terms of your response and how you would like to support Vaya and/or the statewide plan. And with that, I'll just open it up for discussion or questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, and, and before diving in, I just want to thank you for taking the time to do this. I'm new, relatively newly appointed to the Vaya Board and even more newly appointed to the HHS Board, so still learning a lot in both those spaces. But before we dive into this, I just do want to take a moment to recognize what you and your team and, and many, many others at Vaya and at HHS are doing each and every day to serve families and, and kids who are among the most vulnerable in our community. And I know that's a twenty-four-seven, that's not work you walk away from at 5:00 PM. And just want to take a moment to, to recognize that and express appreciation for that. And also just appreciate the perspective that staff is providing as we kind of wade through this request. I just had a quick point of, or question of clarification on the slide that describes the purpose and overview and then benefits. The fourth bullet item says that you can, that children and DSS directors can opt out of the plan if they prefer the tailored or standard plan. And that, I'm just trying to get my head around that, is, is, is a tailored plan something that we would, that Buncombe would have the opportunity to develop with the state, or do we know yet what that means?
The tailored plan is the plan that the LMEs are currently working on rolling out. And I believe they've said, they've named the date of September of twenty-twenty-three as the rollout date. And that is a plan not just for children and family and child welfare, but a plan to meet the, the needs of children and adults who have high specialized needs that are outside of kind of your typical outpatient care needs.
And how do these, how does that intersect with, with this?
And so I might have to ask for some help, but I'll try. So my understanding is that tailored plans, my understanding is that the tailored plan is really meant for the larger population, and this is a really specialized population that would be served by this statewide plan.
Okay, so if we were, for instance, to move forward with an advocate, with a letter saying that as a state-level plan moves forward, we would want consideration for communities like Buncombe that have very strong relationships with our providers, that, that would not, that would not be inconsistent with participating in a tailored plan later on? Or am I jumbling this up? Okay, thanks for helping unjumble me.
It's kind of an either-or kind of thing where, you know, if they roll out a statewide plan and, and you don't like it, you can change plans to a tailored plan that exists. And the tailored plans have been in the works for a long time. They were supposed to roll out in December, pushed back to April, now October first. It looks like it's the tailored plan to start. But that's for a group of folks that don't just need regular care, that come under managed care under a standard plan for Medicaid purposes.
Did that, did that clarify? Because I want to make sure not every single person we're talking about in this CF plan that we're calling it, this specialty plan would be eligible for a tailored plan. I think the tailored plan is really to high, high-need acuity people, right? Yes, there is some overlap, yes. But there is some overlap that some folks in this group can be extremely high-acuity, that could be a tailored plan, right?
Say we have a foster child who doesn't have a high level of need and is maybe placed in a family foster home. They would not be someone that would be enrolled in the tailored plan. The folks that I think about are the ones that are on our care coordinators, Vaya's care coordinator's current caseload as being in like a Level Two foster home or group home psychiatric residential treatment facility, those high level of needs. Those are the folks that would be in a tailored plan. Whereas the entire child welfare population and family in-home population and their parents would be in the child and family specialty plan.
So one question, I'm hoping you can speak more to why that, why you feel that we should look at the regional aspect with Vaya? Because we received a letter from, from the state, and it was pretty strongly urging everyone to, to go with this state plan. So I want to give you an opportunity to just kind of speak to that more directly. Because basically in the letter, one part of it said, despite these challenges, we have a shared obligation to do better for these children, the status quo is not acceptable, and I appreciate your efforts to begin making changes with this. Can you speak more to why you feel that we have a good model here or a good relationship?
Yes, I can try. So what I will say is I don't think that the statewide plan will fix the problem that is being identified through that letter. What I see as the problem in, in my day-to-day experience is that there are not enough provider resources available in our community or across the state to meet the need. We do not have enough therapeutic foster homes, Level Two and Level Three group homes, or psychiatric residential treatment facilities to meet the needs of the children across the state of North Carolina. The plan is not going to impact that. There needs to be something that is targeted toward building up those resources. And the plan is, whether it's a local, a regional, or a state plan, if you don't focus on those resources, the plan is not going to fix that problem. And so we can blame Vaya or the LMEs across the state for this problem. I don't think that gets us to a solution. I don't, I, I believe what I see every day working with Vaya is that they are working right alongside us every day, day and night. I'm on the phone with Vaya at eight PM, nine PM, midnight, talking about these kids, trying to figure out where they're going to go in the middle of the night while they're being discharged from the emergency room. I don't know if we get away from a, a local or a regional solution, I don't know who I'm going to be talking to at those times of night trying to figure out these solutions. So for me, boots on the ground, day-to-day, I value the partnership with Vaya. I trust them, they are working really hard, they have grown, they are in the middle of a lot of growth. A partnership with Benchmarks, which is a provider entity, like a umbrella organization for providers, to try to figure out how to lift up additional provider entities, you know? And so I agree that the, there is a huge problem, and our kids are caught in the crossfire of that problem. I just don't know that a statewide plan is going to get us to the solution that I hope for. I do think that there have been ideas out there, shared that through collaborative work, that could be the beginning of the solution, but that's not where the focus is right now. And so I would love to see those ideas lifted up and can definitely share some material around the, those plans that have talked about things like professionalizing foster parenting, you know, as one option, and opening up additional facilities that would be more targeted towards serving the children in, in the foster care system. And so I don't know if I fully answered your question, but that, that is, that's kind of my point of view in, 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 in some of my worries related to having an entity that doesn't have as much close connection to, to the work that we're doing here in Buncombe or in western North Carolina.
And I, I guess I would probably, I'd be interested to follow up with that and see a little bit more of what this looks like in practice. I understand nothing's perfect, especially around this system. But when you have something that requires proximity, the way that a lot of these specific plans are going, and the impact that they're going to have on families locally, relationship building is key. And, and we've spent a lot of time building relationships from, from what I've seen in the courthouse days. There's a lot of trust there between some of the workers and, and the families that are serving our community. So not, not to take away from anything the state might have in mind, but I'd, I'd be curious to, to get some honest feedback about what that looks like going forward, because that is a very delicate, community-specific issue. And, and that's not easily regained if we lose that.
County Manager Pinder, as we think about the request that's come in, which is a legislative level of support, could the content of that essentially be a synopsis of what Rebecca just shared? Which is that these are the, this is what we're experiencing on the ground, and these are the concerns we have or issues we'd like to see addressed as this moves forward? Does that feel like a, so kind of steer the conversation a little bit?
It does, and we can draft a letter if you guys are interested in a son of a letter. We believe the plan is going to pass, but we do want to register our concern because we are seeing, to Rebecca's point, daily need for our kids in our community. So, and we want to make sure it is just not a statewide insurance agency. And that's what this feels like, that they're going to issue an RFP to get an insurance company that's going to administer claims. And what we are saying is when that happens locally, we lose out, especially in the west or the far northeast, where our network is not as big as it needs to be. And we want our focus to be on building a network, building a place where our kids can go and not be discharged from a hospital. We're then trying to find a place across our state for our kids to go. They're not always here in Buncombe County, we have to ship kids all over because we don't have the resources here. So we don't want to get into a place where it's a statewide solution because one size does not fit all, especially when you get north of seventy-seven or, or west of seventy-seven, I should say.
And would we need a, do we need a motion at this point? Or would you all, would, would the next step be, what next step would you be looking for?
Our next steps would be if you do agree that you want to send a letter, let us draft that letter and send it back to the board for y'all to approve.
So you'll bring that, is that the next meeting or you'll need it before?
Do you have a time in from Vaya when they need a letter?
I believe they need it as soon as possible. I think that this is moving pretty quickly, and so as soon as we can.
So if you want to give us direction to draft that letter down, we can circulate it for you guys instead of waiting for two weeks.
We could, if there's unanimous consent, we could add it as an agenda item to our 5:00 PM meeting and give that direction via vote, if that would be helpful and move the process forward.
Even better, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, so we will add that to our agenda item this evening.
Thank you all for steering us through kind of interpreting, interpreting all this.
And one final thing while Rebecca's here. I would also, beyond this agenda item we're asking, I would really appreciate at some point her coming back and us having more information so that we have a, a better grasp of what all is going on with our most vulnerable population. Because I just think, you know, she's talking about different resources needed and ideas around this. And so I'd really like to have a better grasp of what all is going on.
Okay, there's some things we can share and some we can't, but things that we can absolutely share, we will bring that back.
Okay, thank you. And our next item is Spivey Mountain, and I'm going to kick this off. And then Allison Danes is also going to join in this conversation. And while the slide presentation's getting keyed up there for Allison, I'll just share a few, few comments. So our community members have regularly shared with me how much they value the important conservation work that is being accomplished for our community. And they also share how they would like to enjoy public access to some of these properties. And thanks to the good work of Southern Appalachian Highland Conservancy, there is a prime opportunity to achieve both of these goals for our community. Southern Appalachians is working on conserving a three-hundred-and-forty-acre mountain area in the Deverview community. I grew up calling this general mountain area Spivey, though technically I believe the mountain may also be known as Deverview. So regardless of what you call it, I applaud Southern Appalachians' initiative to conserve this valuable community asset with its proximity to a significant portion of our community. This mountain forest has tremendous potential to provide our community with recreational and educational opportunities. And I especially love that with public access, anyone will be able to enjoy the most spectacular view in Asheville. And this will be an enduring legacy for our community. And now Allison Danes, our Parks and Recreation Director, will provide a quick overview of this opportunity. And then we'll ask Carl Silverstein and Jay Lutze with Southern App to also share more specifics about the project.
Great, thank you, Miss, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you, Commissioners, this afternoon. So I'm going to get a, a quick overview of the property that we were talking about here. So you can see here from this first slide, this is Spivey Mountain, or as Commissioner Wells said, often known as Deverview Mountain. It's located in the Deverview community. We're looking at approximate five-point-two miles from downtown Asheville, three-point-six miles from West Asheville, seven-point-five from Lester, seven-point-nine from Candler. And the pictures that you see here are live photos from the top of the mountain where there is a large clearing. The picture on the left that shows the grassy area looks out over the city of Asheville as well as Biltmore Estate. Whereas the lower right-hand picture where the trees are over there is a direct view to Pisgah Mountain. So highlight and overview here, this is where the property lands. If you zoom out, I do want to take the opportunity to recognize right now, we are all very aware that there was a fire this past weekend at Spivey Mountain. I do want to acknowledge the firefighters, first responders, and volunteers that responded to that and, and did such an excellent job of taking care of that and, and getting that fire under control. That is north of this piece of property. So you can see the outline here in blue of the piece of property that we're looking at. So that fire was north of this property and did not affect this piece of property. You can see, it's about three-hundred-and-forty-two acres. And you could see its relevant location to the, the highway there to the north, Patton Avenue, and then I-40 to the south. So the property status is that this piece of property as of March is currently owned by a single conservation-minded individual who is interested in preserving this area and this location. They're working with SAC in order to give a three-year option for the purchase of this property as a potential for raising funds to make it a piece of property for the county. And what the Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy has done is they have applied for a grant through the land and water conservation grant funding in the amount of a little bit over four million dollars. The piece of property is, with the three-year option to purchase that SAC has, would be approximately eight-point-eight million dollars. And so there would be a variance of approximately four-point-four million dollars that would need to be raised for funds in order for the purchase of this property. And through that grant, what it would do is it would preserve this piece of property for more than ninety-five percent of it would be under a conservation easement. And what that means is here in this slide, which is that it would allow for minimal development, including multimodal unpaved trails, a parking lot, some potential restroom facilities, maybe storage sheds if needed, covered picnic shelters would be an opportunity that could be put up there as well as viewing platforms or observation desks, educational kiosks and such. And then maintenance of trails to preserve the view shed would also be permitted through that conservation easement. What we're looking at is the Southern Appalachians Highland Conservancy is expected to meet that deadline of within three years, raise enough funds for the purchase of that property and county donation, which would come in early twenty-twenty-six. And then we would be able to potentially start improvements in looking at strategizing what we would like to do with this piece of property come early twenty-twenty-seven. So with that, if there's discussion or if you'd like me to call up Carl and Jay, I'm happy to do that as well.
Yes, please do.
Yeah, Carl and Jay, come on up and join.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Wells, for summarizing the project.
project. You really summed it up beautifully. This is a place that we have an opportunity to conserve for wildlife, scenic beauty, perhaps more importantly, a place that people can get to and access. And that's both for, you know, enjoyment, just getting out in nature, taking a walk, so good for our health and wellbeing, and then also education for young people to be able to have class experiences, learn about wildlife, forest habitat. So it's a terrific opportunity, and we value the opportunity to work with the county on, on conserving the property and, and hopefully converting it to a park. And we are sensitive to the need for master planning, feasibility study. We really, as an organization, we're in the forever business, and so we know that the outcome for the future is, is best if we carefully plan that and take it slow and, and are thoughtful about, about the facilities that would be there and the feasibility and, and all those details. So at this stage, we're working on trying to raise the money to pay for it, to make the opportunity possible. And we did seize an opportunity to apply for a state grant with the Land and Water Fund. That was this past February, so we've done that. And we have our eyes on, on other funding sources, federal sources, also additional state sources, and then we would approach private philanthropic donors for money to, to be able to meet the, the overall cost of the project. So happy to try to answer any questions you might have about details of the conservation easement or other aspects, and I know Jay will have some, some insights to share too.
Thanks, Commissioners. I know several people in the room have been to this place, which is great, and we certainly want everybody that's interested to, to come out and have a, have a good experience with us. I would just add to what Carl said, that this property was listed on the real estate market, and this is often a position that we find ourselves in, in the local conservancy, well, the national conservancy movement. Property gets listed and then you're in sort of a, a panic mode, and so we're really excited that we had this opportunity at all. The property was listed for $10 million, and the only thing I would add is that the more quickly we can move, the less the property will cost at transfer, because the calculation that you saw on your screen of $8.8 million is a calculation above the contract price that the property was purchased for by the conservation-minded buyer. So moving quickly is in all of our benefits. The state grant that we've applied for is on a, an annual cycle, so we can't move too quickly, but just a reminder to all of us that speed helps and speed saves money.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Carl, Jay, or Allison?
I've got one, I think this is for Carl or Jay or both. You know, your organization does this a lot, or I presume tries to do this kind of thing a lot. So I, I think I know in the back of my head what I, how I would answer this question, but I want to hear, hear from you guys. You know, what do, what do you find unique and exciting about this property and its potential that makes you, that would make you want to ask, you know, the public to support it and be excited about it too?
So at our founding, our organization was created to protect a corridor for the Appalachian Trail through the Highlands of Roan in a area of extreme ecological sensitivity. And sometimes it's hard to share places that have extreme ecological sensitivity with the public. We see right now, especially during COVID, places that are being loved to death, and those are the extremely beautiful places that are scenic and Instagrammable. And we are very excited about this project in particular because Roan Mountain, where our founding was, is about an hour and a half from here. And Deverview Mountain, Spivey Mountain is about 10 minutes from here. And the other thing we saw during COVID was people without cars, people who have limited transportation options, had a very difficult time getting outside and having the mental health and physical health benefits of spending time outside, which is what doctors said we should all be doing. We should all be outside more during a pandemic, and an upper respiratory pandemic in particular, and that was really hard for a lot of people. And when this property came on the market and we saw the accessibility off of Deverview Road and the proximity to the place where our office is located, Asheville, we got very, very excited because it, so far we have not found a lot of rare plants. We have found very high water quality starting on the property, but we think the public could use the property without impairing water quality at all and having minimal impact on, on wildlife corridor and rare species.
Kind of building on that, a question for Allison. Could you share some, some thinking about sort of equity and access and how a, sort of a, a park or resource like this could be made as, could be made accessible to folks who might not otherwise be able to access wilderness areas or?
Yeah, most definitely. I appreciate the question because I would say that equity is really at the core of what we're doing as we're looking to offer services to the community, recreational and educational opportunities. We're currently undergoing, getting ready to undergo a master plan for the Recreation Department, and being able to reach out to the community and find out what it is that they would like to see in recreational opportunities in their areas, what's important to them. It would definitely be something that we would be focusing on, having groups where we're specifically reaching out to the immediate neighborhoods in particular to see what it is that those folks would like to see from this type of a piece of property and how they would like to see it come to fruition. And then also looking outside of that throughout the county for what kind of amenities that they would like to see from this type of an asset in order to be able to enjoy the beauty and pristine of what it currently is.
Any other Commissioners?
No, just thank you for your work on this. It's really exciting.
I would like, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay. One of the questions I have, and you know, you, I've been, I was born and raised here, always lived in the hills, and I've been up to Spivey Mountain, or Deverview, whatever we call it. I went the first round, and it's beautiful, the land and all, and I think for what we want to do with it. But one of the questions I have is, did we approach the state about this? And the reason I ask that, let me tell you why I'm asking. You know, when I look on the other end, when we start this, matter of fact, I'll be off the commission then, but as a taxpayer, when I look at what we're getting into, something that Buncombe County has not done before, and this is going to be expensive. We'll need a ranger, we're going to need a lot of others. But my deal is, my question is, would it have been cheaper if we talked to the state about this who already have the structure to do it? I mean, that's all, you know, I'm wondering if we've looked at that, because when we get into this, folks, this is great. I mean, it would be good for us, but I hope we realize what we're picking up here. It's not going to be cheap.
Yeah, I would just say that, that I've not looked into, I had any conversation with the state. I don't, I don't know if the Southern Appalachian Highland Conservancy has reached out to the state or if that was an opportunity that was explored.
We, we are working with the state to help raise funds for the project, and the state Parks Division would be supporting our effort to apply for federal funds for the park. And, you know, I think we could talk with the state about whether they would consider having a state park unit there. The state is currently creating a state park in Hominy Valley at Pisgah View State Park. And I think as we approached the project, thought that the scale of the size of the property and the fact that the state is creating another state park in the county led to us thinking that a locally-created and controlled park might be a more workable solution. But, you know, we, we do have a great relationship with our partners at the state. Jay, I don't know if you, you know, would want to reflect on that.
Yeah, I think the, we, we talked to the same individuals about this project, whether it's a county park or a state park, because the funds that the state directs are through the Land and Water Conservation Fund, Stateside Assistant Grants Program, and they sort of give guidance for where they think the money ought to flow. And so when we approached them about this project, they thought of it as a local park that would be paid for in part by state park dollars. So that would be an ongoing collaboration, and they can be a very effective fundraising source. But when they did their park, state park feasibility study, there were no state parks west of Asheville before Gorges and now Pisgah View. And so they work on about a five-year timeline and look at spacing of where the needs of their parks are, just as the county does in its planning. So we, we gave them the opportunity, if they wanted to have a state park on Deverview Mountain, and they recommended that they help us raise the money for, for a county park since the county was also expressing interest.
Commissioner Moore, did you have something you wanted?
No, it was just a thank you to, to all of you for and all the work you did. I know it's not an easy endeavor, especially given how quickly real estate is disappearing in Asheville, so it's nice to see something that's proximate and will be accessible to, to multiple communities.
Thank you all, and I'll share just a few additional comments. So we, we know green space is now widely viewed as a health-promoting characteristic of residential environments and has been linked to mental health benefits as well as reducing mental fatigue and stress. And parks are central, are a central community infrastructure, bringing people and families together. And additionally with this, this potential project, there's a multitude of environmental benefits to this conserva, conservation project as well, with these several headwater tributaries, impacting water quality, important wildlife habitat, and a mature forest providing a cooling effect for the surrounding community as well as many other benefits. So with this, if the other Commissioners are in agreement, I would request that staff create a resolution for us to consider at our next meeting, which establishes the intent to explore creating a county park or preserve for passive recreation and educational opportunities for our community, and that provides staff with the direction and ability to partner with Southern App on seeking state and federal funding and proceeding with any due diligence that is needed.
Is that a form of motion?
Well, not a motion, just, just giving direction to staff.
I'd be in support of that.
Same.
Good with that? Okay. All right. So if you can just work on that and bring that back to our following meeting for us to consider, thank you. I believe that was the last item on our briefing. Did anyone else have anything that they needed to add or share? Okay, County Manager, is there anything else? Thank, thank you all very much. We will be back at 5 o'clock for our regular meeting.